We'll go ahead and call this meeting to an end. We will, uh, we'll open our roll call.
Mayor Holland?
I'm here.
Mayor Proton Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow?
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer?
Here.
Commissioner Wooton?
Here.
Please clap your hands with me and pray. Your Lord be with us tonight. Be with us as we do our best to lead and set good examples and do the best thing that we can do for this town. Bless the people that are involved in every aspect of making this place the most beautiful place on earth. Let us be directed to make good decisions and do everything that we can do to maintain this beautiful piece of paradise that we have in every way possible. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and face our flag so we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item number four will be our public comment. Uh, at this point in the meeting, we will, uh, allow anyone that has a public comment to come up to the podium, address the board and its staff, uh, if you will. Just a couple of things. There was a sign up sheet at the table to your left. Not everybody knows about it. If you missed it, not a big deal. Uh, at the end of our, uh, sign ups, if you have something to say, uh, please raise your hand, recognize you, and, uh, you can come up and say what you have to say. Uh, as always, uh, the public comment period is limited to three minutes. I won't cut you off mid-sentence when the clock is up, but I will just kind of raise a hand and ask you to, I'll say thank you and ask you to finish your thought with respect to the other speakers and the rest of the meeting. So, that being said, uh, call our first speaker.
Dwayne McDougal.
Good evening, sir.
How are you today?
And what?
Can you wait, but, yes, sir, can you wait before, I can hear you now, but before you get started, um, those mics, turn them on, they delay a second. If you would, when you're done, leave it on, just gently set it down on the podium and, uh, it'll make it a little bit more, uh, streamlined process.
As I say, everyone, I'm glad and do, I, uh, just want to encourage everyone to gather a little early and, um, remember, your voice is my mission. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Peter Carey?
Good evening, sir. My name is, uh, Peter Carey from Kokina Drive, and I'm going to first like to thank the commissioners and Frank Rush for all that you guys do in the town. Uh, my, I'm showing tonight is transparency. I've gone to all the, uh, candidate forums for the new commissioner, and we've been emphasizing how important transparency is. And I think we need to get, do better at that at, on the town level. One thing is we have these closed-door meetings, and they, uh, the town, I think the residents should at least know what the, um, the closed-door meetings are about, but not in detail, but at least give us an idea of whether that is for purchasing property or for employee concerns or something like that. But I think the, the town residents should know what those closed meetings are about so we can not be kept in the dark. Second thing for transparency is the making of large decisions or big decisions in the town, where recently there's been a talk about a lack of this fact, that there's a decision being made on a new fire station, and that's a great decision, but I think the town residents should have more input on this before the decision is made. Uh, it's not about location being, already being decided, and again, I think the town should be, and the residents should be given more, more input and opportunity to debate these different decisions before they're made because it's a big decision. We did that once before with the, uh, green space behind the rec center. The decision was made to make the, the recreation area into development as one, and after they did the survey, they realized, wait a minute, the residents don't want this, they want to just leave it as a green space. And I think that pause before the decision was made was very important, and the commissioners listened to the people, and that is now a beautiful green space that we're able to preserve, and I want to thank them for doing that. The, uh, so this, our, the fire station location, I think there are, uh, there's another location, actually, that might be available. I don't even consider it, it's in the commercial area, close to Coast Guard Road, and it's right across from the Southey Path Fire. There's a big green space there that'd be a perfect place in the commercial area to put a fire station, as opposed to putting it in a residential area down along Coast Guard Road. And, uh, that's about it, and I'd like to thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Brian McLeod.
Good evening, sir. All right, everyone, thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Brian McLeod, fourteen twenty Southey Path Road. I rise this evening to announce, uh, a local event that I want maybe those here, those watching, uh, to be aware of and pass forward, please. Um, but before I make announcement of the event, I wanted, uh, like to take a moment to acknowledge the historic Middle East peace efforts by America under leadership of President Trump. I think it's something we can all be thankful for and all unite around. Uh, with that said, the importance of today, today is the first official observance of Charlie Kirk Day of Remembrance. President Trump just honored Charlie Kirk with the Presidential Medal of Freedom. And again, I'll go through the five W's so you know where the event is, when it is, and what it's for. Okay, what it is, it's the observance of the National Day of Remembrance for Charlie Kirk. Who it's for, of course, to honor Charlie Kirk, but it's also for those, uh, for anyone inspired by the life and legacy of Charlie Kirk. Uh, what it is, again, it's the National Day of Remembrance for Charlie Kirk. Where it's going to be, it'll be at three hundred courthouse square in Beaufort. Uh, it's the Carter County Courthouse that will be right there at the steps, so we'll unite, or we'll gather around the flagpole. Uh, during the video, we had over four hundred people there. It was very inspiring. We had people talk from the ages of thirteen to over seventy. Our young people were the most inspiring with what they had to share. Um, when, it's going to be six thirty P M. Friday, this Friday, the seventeenth of October. Again, why? Again, it's to honor the life and legacy of a martyr who continues to inspire a worldwide movement. He taught us all to engage in peaceful dialogue while sharing courage for our faith. How we will conduct this event, it's going to be an informal event for all to gather in remembrance of Charlie Kirk. We'll have a P A system, flags, posters, and signs. Each person is asked to bring their own flags, signs, chairs, candles. Also, it can be an open mic for anybody who wants to just stand up and talk about either local issues or anything that inspires them to speak. We are also, I ask you to bring a non-perishable food item for our local food banks. And a lot of times, I'll just lay with this, a lot of times it's controversial when we talk about Charlie Kirk, but we know in today's world, we see these clips, these clickbait, it doesn't give you the context. It's incumbent upon us to do our research, look at the context, he always tries to find common ground, exercise peace, dialogue, and always, uh, unity. Uh, that's what we want to promote, and that's why we want to unite around this movement. Again, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's it for the list.
Did anyone miss the sign up sheet, uh, for public comment? I saw one hand go up there, I saw another hand, yes, ma'am. Uh, you, sir?
Sure.
Rich Coates?
I want to commend the town board for serving energy by keeping air conditioning very hot here, guys. Anyway, um, so I'm here to talk about the, uh, fire station and the, uh, acquisition of the property, uh, on Coast Guard Road. My name is Rich Coates, I am the president of the H O A, and, uh, I want you all to know that the, the town, or the board of, uh, the H O A appreciates that you are working on this with a friendly condemnation. We're in favor of that. Now, switching gears, uh, I'm going to talk like a resident of Pebble Beach and of Emerald Isle, stakeholder. I think that this station built in this location at this time shows tremendous forethought by all of the commissioners. This thing probably should have been built a couple of years ago, okay? Uh, it's situated, uh, perfectly between a commercial area and a residential area, and it faces north towards the bridge. Now, I'm very well, I, I, I can, uh, I can really speak to this issue because I have been a firefighter for forty-four years, in small departments and large departments. I spent the last thirty-six years with the city of Raleigh, and I retired there a couple of years ago as captain. I watched Raleigh build eleven fire stations while I was there, renovate three, uh, relocate four, and I could tell you that, uh, they made some mistakes, but they also did a lot of good, they did a whole lot of good stuff, too. And I've looked at, uh, I've looked at, oh, I've read the information over four or five times, and I'm telling you, you're doing a fantastic job. This is a great location to put the station, and here's some of the reasons why. Uh, it's got, you got it located there, as I say, it faces north, it faces towards the bridge. It's kind of on a bit of a curve, which makes many of these people back here that drives in that practice will tell you, when they're pulling out, it's hard to look ninety degrees that way and ninety degrees that way. On this curve, they'll only have to look about thirty degrees in each direction, and that counts for the vehicles that are on the road there, too. It's a very safe location. By, uh, by building it on the, uh, size of the footprint of a lot that you're looking at, um, you're going to have some room to expand. One important feature that I see is it can be a drive-through station, so you don't have to back up, because nobody back here likes to be put out in the street like traffic home, stop, traffic, while the truck backs in, okay? It's not safe. Also, I'll bet you the chief there will tell you that fifty to seventy percent of his accidents occur, occur during backing, backing on the street, backing in emergencies, and backing on their own properties. So having drive-through stations is really, really important.
Okay.
Running out of time. Um, you got room to expand. Perhaps down the road, uh, you'll want to, uh, you'll want to have additional equipment. I guess maybe a three-way station, you got, you got room to expand, potentially build a maintenance facility for your small equipment or have a, an extrication, or an area of train and extrication behind the station. I know there's going to be some people here that are going to talk about noise, and I'm going to tell you, I don't think that's going to be an issue. Um, all my years with the city of Raleigh, you know, my, uh, majority of the stations I was at, uh, were in neighborhoods or across from neighborhoods, and I can tell you that these guys spend about, these guys and gals spend about a third of their life at the fire station, the houses around them are their neighbors, and they don't want to take off their neighbors, right? So they're going to be, they're going to be, uh, conservative.
You wrap up, please. Not, not just, I apologize.
And it reduces the workload because it combines over three stations instead of just two. So same workload, spread out over three. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Uh, you have any of that, yes, ma'am? Excuse me.
I am Patricia Leonard from Lansing to North Carolina, but we have a place on, um, Cedar Street. This, I did not compete, uh, prepare, but in follow-up of the gentleman with transparency, I think that the commissioners need to somehow reach out to a re, uh, an outreach committee to encourage more permanent residents to engage in the monthly meetings. Make somehow form a committee, a subcommittee or something to, um, give a listing of new permanent homeowners on Emerald Isle, and knock on their door or get their email some way to let them know what you all are all about and what all of these folks should be about. It's very sad that these fewer people come to your meetings. I come when we're here. You know, I'm, I'm not a permanent resident that I can vote for someone to be on the board, but it's most important imperative that somehow or another you reach out to new people and, um, not old people, but the prior residents, the established residents, to let them know that you are interested in their voice, in their opinion. I've been up here a couple of times and, you know, I always have something to say, whether it's worthy or not, but, you know, if it comes to mind, it comes out. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, did we miss anyone else? Yes, sir?
I don't need the microphone.
Be quick. Typically, I'll be here.
This is everybody's here to answer this question for me because I was helping, and thank you for everybody running for commissioner and mayor brace. I just have a question concerning signs. It's a beautiful outlay of signs we have all over the town, but it helps me someone do the signs. I was, understood that anything from, let's say, a wine market and speedway to the bridge was off limits to putting candidate signs in that area. Um, I just, because I thought that was city-owned land, and there was mine saying not to put them here. So I'm just trying to clear up the, the signs.
Yeah, so, so thank you for the, the question. So that is N C D O T right-of-way for Highway fifty-eight. The state law allows the placement of campaign signs on all D O T right-of-ways, so they are permitted on that stretch of Highway fifty, and the entire rest of fifty as well. All right. Hi.
Thank you, sir. Did we miss anyone else? Last call, the last call? All right, thank you all for your comments, I really, excuse me, we appreciate it. Uh, item number six would be, uh, the, we heard you follow up the public comments. There should be, um, responses, printed responses to last month's comments on the table. Would have been to your left as you came, came in. If not, if you don't get a copy, please let us know, and, um, please always know that we're happy to do everything we can to meet with you, speak with you via phone, email, whatever it takes, uh, on any issue that you deem important or, or it's, it's front of mind for you. But, uh, we, uh, not perfect, but we always do try to be there. All right, item number six, uh, Ms. Rochford, uh, excuse me, seven, would be the identifi- identification of any conflict of interest.
I'll do a roll call, if you would. Please, uh, let us know if there's any, uh, conflict of interest. Mayor Holland?
Uh, I see none.
Mayor Proton Taylor?
No conflicts.
Commissioner Brownlow?
No conflicts.
Uh, Commissioner Sanderson?
No conflicts.
Commissioner Sawyer?
No conflicts.
And Commissioner Wooton?
No conflicts.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number eight will be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt Snacks Agenda?
Zerbit.
All right, Commissioner Brownlow with the motion. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion is carried, thank you. Item number nine, Chief Mike Penizarella with the introduction of some new employees. I understand?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I'd like to take this opportunity to, uh, introduce four new boardroom employees for our state. I'll first begin with Jessica Archie. Jessica was born and raised here in Carter County. Uh, she graduated from West Carter High School in twenty twenty-one. She attended Carter Community College after high school, where she, uh, obtained her associate's degree, and also went to the L E T. Jessica's always wanted to be in law enforcement for as long as she could remember, and her goal was a law enforcement officer here in the wild, is to make a positive impact on not only our community, but with a focus on our younger generation. So, standing to my left is Miss Jessica Archie.
Welcome.
Uh, next is Xavier Pittman. Xavier is twenty-nine years old. He is originally from Georgia. Uh, Xavier served nine years in the United States Marine Corps, uh, before transitioning into law enforcement. Xavier currently lives in Honesville County with his wife.
Next is Mr. Leland Ryger. Leland is twenty-three years old. He was born in Raleigh, North Carolina, and grew up in Apex. Leland spent most of his younger life, I'll, I do, he was twenty-three years old, so he spent most of his younger life growing up here fishing in Emerald Isle in Ked Carter Red. His grandparents own a house on the sound side of Ked Carter Red. After graduating from Middle Creek High School in twenty nineteen, he moved here to Carter County full-time with his parents. Uh, Leland worked, uh, many, uh, jobs while he was trying to figure out just what he wanted to do in life. And in twenty twenty, he decided to attend the University of North Carolina Wilmington, where he received a bachelor's degree in criminology, uh, with a minor in sociology. After graduating from U C W, he then realized he wanted to transition into law enforcement, where he was also in the same graduating class as Jessica Archie. Uh, he decided to pursue a career in law enforcement because most of his family had a military background. Uh, Leland has a strong support system from his family, uh, and especially from his significant other, uh, in his pursuit of his career in law enforcement. Leland looks forward to doing the best job he can, providing the most that he can for not only the town of Emerald Isle, uh, but the Emerald Isle Police Department as well. Again, Mr. Leland Ryger. Welcome. And last but not least, Miss Carrie Thompson. Carrie recently moved to North Carolina from South Carolina, where she spent ten years with the Old County Sheriff's Office. Uh, she is a veteran of the United States Army. She has two children, thirteen and six, and in her spare time, she enjoys fishing and reading. Uh, so again, Miss Carrie Thompson. Welcome.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chiefs, and, uh, Archie Pittman, Ryger, and Thompson, welcome. Glad to have you on board, thank you, and, uh, and thank you families for allowing you all to make that sacrifice to keep us all safe. Thank you very, very much.
Mayor Holland? Could I just interrupt for one second?
No.
Staff has informed me that the volume is not working on the broadcast on Facebook.
Okay.
Working to try to resolve that. I just wanted to let you make you aware of that. We'll try to get a fix as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
That may be associated with this, it could be, except trying different approaches to try to get it resolved, so.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, item number ten would be our public announcements. Excuse me. All right, our Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee will meet again on Wednesday, October fifteenth, at nine A M. in the community center. Early voting begins October sixteenth, uh, at Western Park. If you're not familiar, it's, uh, is it Old Fifty-Eight? Um, can't remember the, the road that Western Park is on.
Old Fifty-Eight.
Old Fifty-Eight, uh, go to Bojangles, get a biscuit, drive directly across the street. It's on your left, you can visit, there'll be forty, uh, forty-eleven, uh, campaign signs out there. Uh, starts off, October sixteenth at Western Park. United States Coast Guard Station Emerald Isle Halloween Haunted Station, Truck or Treat, Friday, October seventeenth, from five to nine. Police Educating the Public, the next meeting will be held Tuesday, October twenty-first, from ten to eleven A M. here in the boardroom. Our next Coffee with the Cop will be held Thursday, October twenty-third, from nine A M. to ten A M. here in the boardroom. The Emerald Isle Marathon, Half Marathon, and Five K, the next slated event will be held Saturday, October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. That one snuck right back up on us, it feels like we just did it. Fun time for everybody. I've, uh, participated a couple of times, uh, it, it, it's really, really fun and a great calls. Our next Planning Board meeting will be held Monday, October twenty-seventh, at six P M. Uh, that's here in the boardroom, too, unless I'm mistaken. And our Halloween Trick or Treat will be held Friday, October thirty-first, from five thirty to nine thirty. It's town-wide. Our next Neighborhood Watch Meeting will be held Tuesday, November fourth, four P M. here in the boardroom. And Election Day will be held Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, don't quote me on the times, I think it runs from six, six-thirty.
Six, seven, seven thirty.
Six-thirty in the morning and seven-thirty. Now, it's a long day, uh, but, uh, Election Day, Tuesday, November fourth. Um, it's an off year as far as the bigger e- elections, but your voice counts, your voice matters. Uh, I would encourage any and everybody to not sleep on, um, your municipal election. It's a big thing, it's a big deal. Free admission to the public, the next Emerald Isle Car Show Benefiting Shop with a Cop will be held Saturday, November eighth. Rain date of November fifteenth, I don't have my glasses. Uh, Western Ocean Regional Access, that's another fun day if you're a car enthusiast. Veterans Day Holiday will be at the, uh, the Town Admin and Community Center will be closed Tuesday, November eleventh. And the next Planning Board Meeting, Monday, November seventeenth, at six P M. here in the boardroom. Are we looping here? See, have a couple seconds. Excuse me.
We've got everything indicated until the next board meeting.
Okay, I'll play. Normally it goes back to a logo there, so we'll keep going. All right, I think we've covered it all. Oh, all right, and our next Board and Commissioners Meeting will be Tuesday, November eighteenth. I can't see, I'm sorry. Is that?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Six P M. here in the boardroom. Christmas Parade, Saturday, November twenty-ninth. Uh, fun time for everybody. Is registration still open for that, or does anybody know off top they're going when registration closes? Here you are.
Registration is open until the event, but it's over.
November ninth is the deadline to reach out to Candace and her esteemed team if you want to enter a float or, uh, group in the Christmas Parade. And now we're done, thank you. All right, item number eleven. He's camping, I've got a hand up. I'm sorry.
Jason, I just wanted to add in the, uh, new date for the Neighborhood Watch Pancake Breakfast.
Oh, yes.
It's this Saturday, it's the raid date, it's on the eighteenth, from eight to eleven.
Saturday, October eighteenth, from eight to eleven.
And it's here.
The Pancake Breakfast will be held here at the boardroom, correct?
That's the rain date, since we got written down by this weekend.
Very good. Bring your friends. Bring everybody, they'll be able, please get in on that. Don't forget. And all, as always, our town staff does a really, really great job of updating our website, uh, and all of our social media channels as far as, um, uh, advance, uh, reschedules, rain dates, all that kind of stuff, so see us online, see us on Facebook, and, um, please come out and participate, it's a great event, and thank you for reminding me.
Thank you.
All right, item number eleven, um, from the North Carolina League of Municipalities and Chief Billy Mathias, our fire chief, we have an update on our fire, uh, fire service risk assessment, so I'll turn it over to you guys. Be of the chief.
Good evening, officials, citizens. Um, it's been great pleasure to have to introduce this gentleman, you find him, first met him several years back. Uh, he can't work the home club, this is a big display here for our, uh, crew members in Emerald Isle, for our department, and, uh, great relationship has been built since then, uh, so I would like to introduce, uh, T J Deluca, he's with, um, John, he's a supervisor.
Good evening, thank you all for, for allowing me to attend this meeting. Uh, it gives me an opportunity to, one, present a plan for completion of our North Carolina League of Municipalities, uh, Fire Department Risk Assessment Program, and provide a little bit of praise that needed, uh, by the staff of the fire department. The North Carolina League of Municipalities provides many things to the local government, one of them being, uh, operating as your insurance company. As such, we, our insurance company, we try and assist our, our local governments in reducing times, making, making jobs they do a little bit safer. Um, we understand that firefighters have inherent risks with they do, uh, working with fire chiefs, uh, we try to minimize those where we can, with effective controls. Our risk assessment evaluates offices and procedures, training mechanisms, operations, equipment that's being used. Um, it's a very, very strenuous, difficult lift to complete this assessment. Many firearms aren't started, but not many completed, uh, so through the dedication and hard work of the fire chief, um, and the effective operations that they have. that they have, they were able to complete this entirely matter. And they should receive a lot of praise for doing so. Can we bring up the folks who knew it? Do a presentation. Do you mind?
They're a little shy. Sorry. Said cheesecake. A lot of those faces love being in the center of attention. You can tell. Eat all those out.
They love that cheesecake.
I want to tell you what, they should be flouted and applauded and appreciated every time you see them. They're the ones, they show up when you don't know who else to call. And I've said it once, I'll say it again, and I'll say it until the day I die. I'm grateful for you all. I've had fantastic experiences with everyone, most everyone back on that line right there. Had some not-so-great experiences at the same time, whether it be personal or someone that is close to me, and you're always there. You're always there. You're there when nobody else is. You run to the fires, away from it. Eternally grateful. All right. Before I start cutting onions here, we'll go to our item number 12, Consent Agenda. Your motion to adopt a consent agenda?
Silated.
All right. Sawyer and James are in a close spot for motion. All in favor?
Sawyer.
Motion is carried. Item number 13 will be the Carteret County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Several names there, Mickey Anderson, Amanda Killian, Kamal Shaw, Lynn White. Frank, I'll turn it over to you to let you lead this conversation from here.
Thank you, Mayor Holland, Commissioners. I'm really pleased to have representatives from NCDOT, Carteret County, and the Down East Regional Planning Organization here with us tonight. They're going to present the County Comprehensive Transportation Plan to you. The plan is county-wide, has them specifically in focus on the projects within Emerald Isle or near Emerald Isle that will impact our residents in the future. I'll let them take you through the individual projects and tell you a little bit more about the process. But the main thing I want to underscore for you and for the audience is that this is the initial step in a very long process that DOT uses to ultimately construct new transportation improvements in North Carolina. So this is officially called the Carteret County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Perhaps a better descriptor is that it is a list of the identified needs within Carteret County, including Emerald Isle. So any of the projects that are included in this plan, if it's adopted, it's ultimately by all of the towns, including this board, as well as Carteret County, it then goes to the Down East Rural Planning Organization. These will be the projects that will be evaluated by NCDOT in the future. There will be a lot more analysis, a lot more public comments and public involvement in the planning process. Some of these projects may get funded in a couple of years. Some of them may get funded in 20 or 30 years. Some of them may never get funded, depending on how the rest of that process goes. So what I just want to underscore for everybody is this is the first step in a long process. But in order to make any of these improvements in reality in the future, you have to start somewhere, and that's what tonight's item is for you.
Do you all have copies of the flyer to your notes? Where's everybody's documents? Thank you so much, Frank, for that introduction there. So yeah, like Frank said, my name is Amanda Killian, and I'm here today for the Transportation Planning Division at NCDOT. We also have Kamal Shaw from NCDOT's Transportation Planning Division. We have Patrick Flanagan, who works for the county. And we have Mickey Anderson, who works for the Down East Rural Planning Organization. And we have Lex White, who works for NCDOT's Plan Making Division, Division Two. All right. So here's a little bit of the agenda. I'll just quickly go over what a CTP is. I'm trying to do a really good job of kind of introducing some of the things. Talk a little bit about progress, the next steps through this plan, and then we'll get right into the highway and bike and ped recommendations. And then hopefully we'll seek your adoption in there too. So what is CTP? It's a high-level, long-range, needs-based plan. So it's looking 25 to 30 years out in the future. Like Frank said, it comes before any prioritization of funding. So this is just a very early stage because it really is ideas that we kind of put together with the community and the locals after doing analysis. So yeah, it's developed cooperatively with NCDOT, the Down East Rural Planning Organization, Carteret County, all the municipalities, community stakeholders, and the public. And this just represents consensus on a future transportation system. And we have one of these for about each county in the state of North Carolina. So this is just updating the old 2014 plan, which you can see on the right there. So here's a bit of the timeline of the plan. So we started this back in summer of 2020. We set up the map and everything, and we had a public input survey that we released in summer of 2023. There were some delays and things due to COVID and staff turnover. But back in October of 2023, we kind of picked up and had our monthly steering committee meetings, which were comprised of representatives from about every town in Carteret County. So we met and we did some engineering analysis, and then we developed these recommendations that you're going to see here. And then in May of this year, we held four public input sessions, again, where people could come out. They have booster boards, and everybody can look at the recommendations and give any So the next steps, we're going around to all the towns and seeking their adoption of this plan. So we've been to four counties so far. We have all the rest of the town meetings coming up soon. So we're here to hopefully seek your adoption of this plan. And so after we get all those town adoptions, we'll move on to endorsement from the Down East Rural Planning Organization, and then it'll go to the NC Board of Transportation for adoption. After that, user-friendly booklet will be made, and all this will be posted online to the public, and anyone can see it. And again, this is just, this will help support better funding opportunities in the future. These are all just ideas. These projects haven't necessarily been funded yet, but if they go to be funded in the future, this will help kind of be a basis for that. So with that, we'll just get into recommendations. So we'll start with the highway recommendations. So here is a map of the entire Carteret County. On the page after that, we have an inset of Emerald Isle. And red projects, those are congestion projects. So as you can see, we have four congestion-related highway projects here. A couple of these are roundabouts, and some of these are in the state transportation program. And so they have already been funded and are heading towards being built. We also have our recommendation 2019. This is the Emerald Isle Bridge improvements. So we saw a need of congestion on both of the bridges. So we have bridge improvement projects listed here in the CTP. And this is, and after, you know, talking to our committee and everything, they suggested that if this were going to be built, it would be modeled after the surface of the bridge. But again, this hasn't been funded yet. This is just, if it ever goes for funding in the future, this will help kind of provide a backbone for that. And on the next slide there, this is a little bit more zoomed out of Emerald Isle, but we just wanted to highlight a couple other projects that are in the plan. So Project 333, this is a bypass project. And again, this was just needed due to a lot of congestion on NC 24. So we included this here, but the location, none of that is determined. This hasn't been funded. This is just identifying the need. So if it ever wants to go for funding in the future, then it's kind of shown in this plan. And we also have Project 323, which is a mid-island bridge over the Bogstown. But again, there's no location has been determined or anything. There hasn't even really been any preliminary analysis on this because it hasn't been funded. We just simply identified the need, and if it ever wants to go for funding in the future, this is to get just kind of something that supports that. Are there any questions on any of the highway recommendations?
Is there anything for replacement of the Emerald Isle Bridge instead of putting epoxy and stuff and paste back into it?
That would be determined at a later date. We just put a recommendation to widen that bridge, but any details of how that would be done or any, anything to fix it, that would be more, I guess, the division.
Question from any other Commissioners? Excuse me.
Well, back over to the bike and ped recommendations. So again, here's a map of the entire Carteret County, and the slide after this kind of zooms into Emerald Isle. And the projects are older categories, so all the projects here are multi-use path projects. And you can kind of see, yeah, basically it runs along NC 58. So we just talked to our committee and saw a need for that to better connect NC 58. And so we included a lot of multi-use path additions along here. Are there any questions on that?
Question from the board. Have questions.
All righty. So the next two little slides, these are just other maps that we included in our final comprehensive transportation plan. We just wanted to include them so you can see them here. So this is a facility-type snap, and again, this is the whole county. The slide after this will kind of zoom into Emerald Isle. And so this is just showing the future facility types that were proposed in this plan. And the slide after this is just showing the public transportation and rail recommendations. And we don't have any recommendations. This is simply just showing the existing traffic routes in Carteret County. So are there any questions from anything I've presented?
I have a question, not so much on this plan, but thank you for presenting this. And I understand this is kind of like a wish list of things in the future that we might be able to do if funding becomes available. If folks have good ideas for things that they'd like to see, what is the mechanism for them, and obviously not for this plan, but for future plans? What's the mechanism to feed into a plan like this from the community?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we have an opportunity to throw out these plans for the public to get their input. So like I said, we have a public input survey that we always do for the comprehensive transportation plan. And so that's online or by paper. So citizens can submit their concerns in the area through that. And we also, I guess for this plan, we held four public input sessions where, you know, we were all there. We have booster boards, everybody to come out, we have to talk to the public. So I think those are a great opportunity to express your opinion.
And those were the ones for this. I remember there was one over at the library and one down final for the.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Amanda, these are, these items that are mentioned in here are not set in stone. These are simply placeholders for identifying that this area needs an improvement, a traffic improvement. So these things that are proposed are not set in stone. There's not going to be five more roundabouts next year or anything like that, so.
Correct. Yes, these are, these are just the needs of the future, 25 to 30 years out, so.
Thank you.
Amanda. The only one on the plan that is kind of set is that of Van Run and the set for this year, 2029. Who figures out what is something that is stated about that?
Correct.
Could you repeat his statement? In case the audio is back up, just so everyone can hear.
Lynn, keep the.
Hopefully the audio at home is fixed. A lot of people watch the meeting just so everybody can hear, hopefully hear what he is saying, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're good.
The three showing for roundabouts, the one that Coast Guard Road is not funded at all, the one in Moon Street is not funded at all, 322, that's the one at Van Run, and it is funded, but it's been pushed out. So we're going 2029 this year for any kind of search to that.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that funding streams to, from, pass through the DOT.
Reshowed.
Yeah, reshowed. So again, no earth-shattering news or movement in the coming three to five years would be accurate or no?
The only thing we'll see probably next year, June 26th, will be a project led forward in Brooklyn, the Interstation 2458. It's not a big interchange project. It's just a capacity project. Have a lane, additional lane coming towards the bridge, additional lane going away from 58 toward Mason.
Thank you.
That'll be that next year.
I appreciate the clarification anytime you talk about bridges, roundabouts, attorney lanes, all that kind of stuff. The room real can get really busy really quickly, so I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions from the board before we go into public hearing? All right. There is a public hearing, excuse me, on the agenda for the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. I'll ask for a motion to go into public hearing.
Question from Roundabout.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is now open, much like the, excuse me, public comment. I'll now open the floor to anyone that signed up for the public hearing to make their comments regarding the transportation plan. If you missed the sign-up sheet, again, no big deal. We still get your three minutes, and we'll start with anyone that did sign up.
No one's on the sign-up.
All right. No signups, sign-ups. Anyone requesting to make comment, and this would be specifically for the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Anyone like to have something to say? All right. Then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Sawyer with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. And item 13C would be a potential motion to adopt the Carteret County Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
Motion to adopt resolution, authorizing friendly. Oh, no, that's 14. It's coming up though.
I'm done. Where is it?
Resolution, take a question to adopt a resolution to Carteret County Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
All right. Motion's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Just, I know. Thanks.
And Mr. Anderson from Durfburg and everyone else from the DOT, thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
That's very welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Item 14 would be the resolution to potentially authorize the friendly condemnation of property at 9201 Coast Guard Road. Mr. Rush, I'd like to take it from here, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Holland, Commissioners. We're pleased to present this resolution for your consideration this evening. It would formally authorize a town manager and lieutenant attorney to proceed with the necessary actions to complete the friendly condemnation of two-acre tract of land at Deep Pebble Beach, condominium complex, fronting on Coast Guard Road. Ultimately, the land is envisioned for the future construction of a new fire station grade to serve western Emerald Isle, Coast Guard Road corridor. It is made available for that purpose. However, there is a two-acre tract that is proposed. Approximately one acre would be allocated for a new fire station at some point in the future. The additional acre would be available for future town improvements as determined by Board of Commissioners at some time in the future. Prior to my return to Emerald Isle, I know that the town invested a lot of energy and completed a lot of review and analysis about the need for a third fire station and potential locations for a third fire station. Another note to convey, some of you served on that committee and met for several years. Ultimately, looked at several different sites in western Emerald Isle, including Pilot River Drive, Youth Bridge, Wild Woods Park. Drive, Youth Bridge, Wild Woods Park, perhaps a few other sites. Ultimately, was, the town was not able to complete the acquisition of land for the fire station at that time. When I returned to work for the town in June of this year, in my conversation with me to you, it was apparent to me that public safety is a top priority for all members of the Board, Commissioner, Mayor, certainly I, our community, and public safety is our primary function as a local government. So with that knowledge and that past history, got to work on looking at additional sites for a new fire station at some point in the future. At my level, took a look at four different sites over the last few months. One was the same Emerald Isle with the location that you all had explored over the last couple of years. Some potential to make that work, but a very difficult and expensive proposition for the town, given the fact that that was funded by state grant funds in 2002, a total of $2.4 million to purchase that land. So I took another look at that, made another attempt to make that happen. Looked at a tract of land that's comprised of a few different pieces of property here, spinning the fridge. It was no interest from the owners in selling that to the town. Looked at a similar piece of property down at Point Hill Village, far end of Coast Guard Road, in a similar arrangement to what we're talking about here tonight. When you're citing a fire station, Chief Mathias is here, and something must be more to the operational and the strategic issues associated with fire and mess service a little bit later. When you're citing this station, number one, it's clear that we've got the deficiency in the western part of town along the Coast Guard Road corridor. And at such time, the town proceeds with that, we would ideally want to locate that station somewhere not at the end of the line, if you know we've got temporary station arrangements set up with the Coast Guard all the way down to the point. When looking at the call volume, looking at the ability to impact fire service in the most positive ways, you really want to be somewhere closer to the east end of the Coast Guard. Ideally, probably somewhere, excuse me, somewhere between Hobbix FD8 and Emerald Isle would be taken. So this site was identified as a potential site in Gray, if you could please put the graphics up on the screen. Appreciate it. I think most of you are obviously familiar with Pebble Beach. Hard to see on here, but if you see the blue dot in the middle, that's the Pebble Beach complex. This is the proposed two acre tract of land that if the board approves, the town would seek to condemn in a friendly manner. It's approximately two acres. It is located directly to the east of the access driveway at Pebble Beach. It has about 200 feet in front of it along Coast Guard Road. You can see the unshaded area up in the top right corner. That is a piece of property that would be retained by Pebble Beach Home and Land Association. The town would require everything in yellow. You can see it kind of curves off to the east, goes back toward the south, toward the main buildings, Pebble Beach. Importantly, there is a 40-foot buffer proposed, and that is along the Pebble Beach driveway. The intent behind that is to minimize any impacts on Pebble Beach owners and visitors. In a perfect world, hopefully, they would not even know that a future station is there. The proposed fire station is targeted for the area at the northern extent of the property, quite along Coast Guard Road. There's roughly a 200 by 200 foot footprint there. That is identical to the footprint that the town has available for fire station two. And so we think that one acre area of the property is more than sufficient for a new fire station at some future date. We also believe that the orientation of the property is well positioned to allow for drive to the base, heads based on previous comment I have at last back and activities associated with the fire, also reducing the water there. The bottom in the right side of the property that butts up to the Emerald Isle RV Resort, also a balcony acre, and so that land would be available at a discretion of board issued in the future for other improvements, like the public safety improvements, might be public works improvements, might be parks and recreation improvements. At this point in time, we don't have any specific ideas for that portion of property. However, this action, we seek to give future boards the maximum flexibility, so use that for official use for our residence and property. We initially started out talking with the Pebble Beach Home and Land Association with the idea of negotiating the purchase of this property. There are 228 condominium units in the Pebble Beach complex. We had very positive conversations with the Pebble Beach Board Directors. Mr. Coates, President of the Board, spoke to you earlier tonight, and certainly if you have other questions for him, I'm sure he's happy to answer later on tonight as well. We started off looking at the potential for a negotiated purchase. Because of the complexity involved with 228 individual unit numbers, we settled on the condemnation process upon Chapter 48 of the general statutes. That process has a copy of those statutes in your packet as well. That process enables the town to acquire this property fairly clear. We'll tell you more about the process in just a second. As a town manager, I would tell you the condemnation is a greedy bad word. I do not like that word. In my entire career, we've only done it a few times. Primarily so typically starting with projects in 2003 and in 2005. So I don't like that process. The only reason that this is presented for your consideration tonight is because we intend to work a very positive cooperative manner with Pebble Beach. As you heard from the president earlier, everything had his support from the seven board members with Pebble Beach HBOA. So great thing to happen. If that did not exist, I don't think we brought this forward for your consideration. So I want to stress to everyone in the audience, this is very much intended to be a cooperative venture partnership. That ultimately, I believe, is very good for the town in Emerald Isle. I believe it's very positive for Pebble Beach Condominium Complex. I believe it's very positive for our residents, property owners, residents and visitors via western Emerald Isle. I think to help from a point I think one of the speakers made earlier, we have known that there was a need for improved fire and mess services in this area for several years, and lots of great efforts by folks came before us. This is an opportunity, I think, to finally address that, here the land. As you know, they're not making any more lands than you can allow. A land that is available is very expensive. There's just not that much of that. That's a large piece of land. So this is a unique and attractive opportunity for the town. It's probably ideally situated in the area that we need for a couple of few years. One is, it's on that Coast Guard Road corridor, where we have to improve our response time. Sometimes our response time in that area are 10 minutes or more. We think by locating the station there, we can cut that in half, and maybe even better than that in some areas. So it's really ideally situated for us to improve life saving services in that part of town, whether it's a cardiac event, whether it's a self fire, Chief Mathias, speaking of those things a little bit more. Secondly, it's directly adjacent to the west end of our commercial area in town. So certainly will aid in response to those facilities, will aid in insurance premiums for the buses, potentially will aid in insurance premiums for Pebble Beach, because we think we would be able to reduce the ISO rating associated with the town by building a new station at some point in the future. And then finally, I think it's, and this was intentional, credit of the Pebble Beach Board Directors, intentional to locate this potential acquisition in an area where it minimizes the impact on any other properties. And that 40-foot buffer is intentional. The shape of this property is intentional. A location along Coast Guard Road, we're trying to keep any impacts that may occur as far away as possible from other residential properties. Certainly, you can't avoid all of them. One of the concerns that we've heard in recent days is the potential for noise. And so I mentioned earlier the backup noise, the beep 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 of the large trucks. Maybe we address that. If, if and when we build a third fire station here, there will be drastic delays of minimizing the backup noise associated with that. Very annoying, I hate it too. But I also think that all of those calls that this station would ultimately answer, we already have five trucks, ambulances, I mean, right by here. It's sirens, blaring. And it's the same calls, we're just redistributing them, and origin, car, urgent funds would be a disaster. So I don't think that you're going to see a tremendous noise impact, because quite frankly, in those residential areas along Coast Guard Road, I could hear the sirens every time a call goes out down the area. So I think, understand that concern, I think it's probably minimal. We are responding to about 1,500 calls per year in the whole town that originate at a fire station, so you divide that by three, maybe 500 calls a year. We think in some time, maybe it'll be 15, 75 calls a month, maybe in a way, 20 appearing calls a month. So I think the impacts are, from noise, are not as significant as one might initially think. And beyond that, they're already, it's already happening right now, growing travel in the past. Couple of other things to mention to you. The North Carolina General Statutes, if the town proceeds with the friendly condemnation, it requires that we provide just compensation to the property owners. And so there's a process, if the board approves a resolution tonight, we will go through a process where sometime in the next couple of weeks, within a week or two after you approve a resolution, if it's not tonight, it's some other meeting, we will send out a notice to all 228 property owners. There's a draft copy of that in your packet. We may tweak the language a little bit, depending on comments tonight and some other comments from attorneys. But that will go out. That is legally required. That includes a very thorough explanation with treatment to all the things that are sharing this data tonight. We expect that will go out, if we, if the board takes action tonight, we expect that will go out sometime before the end of October. We would then schedule, we've actually already preliminarily scheduled a special informational meeting with the Pebble Beach community for November 15 at 11 a.m. We can do that in this room and also provide a love link for people who cannot attend the meeting. Just pay in that. And then sometime around Thanksgiving, maybe December 1st, we'd be getting town attorney would file the official legal action to condemn the property. Once that occurs, the town's required to make deposit with the amount of just compensation. And that can be deposited with the courts and is available for the use of Pebble Beach. From that date, there is a 120-day process by which any property owner, it will also be communicated with the holders as well as part of that process, can file an appeal of this action. They can contest for the process we're using, they can contest the dollar value. We have secured an appraisal. There's a copy of that in your packet that was completed by Real Services of Eastern Carolina. They're probably the most respected appraisal firm in eastern North Carolina. The estimated, the appraisal value of the property is $1,255,000. So if the board approves this, you will deposit those funds approximately 30 days after the notice code out to all of the property owners. Ultimately, when this, if and when this is completed, that money would be available to the Pebble Beach community. Pebble Beach Board Directors, I'm sure have the process to determine specifically which improvements or how they use their funds, but their intent communicated thus far is to make that available for beneficial improvements, so they've got some disuse of some of their common air facilities, clubhouse, parking lot, etc. That is their intent. The dollar value of $1,255,000 comes out to about $5,400 per individual owner. And so those funds would be available for improvements in the Pebble Beach HSA board directors, would be able to eliminate or minimize the financial burden on their unit owners to make beneficial improvements. So, you know, for that reason, understandably, the board directors is very interested in this, in trying to improve their community and try to minimize the problem on their unit owners. The financial impact, what town? So at a cost of $1,255,000, our recommendation would be to finance it over a term of 10, maybe 15 years. And obviously, we can stretch that out or shorten that up in any way that you all would like. But for example, if we finance it over 10 years, the debt service payment is about $188,000, $188,000 paid annually for the next 10 years. That's the equivalent of about a third of 10 on your tax rate. So if you decided to see with this, I think you need to make sure that you're comfortable with that tax burden impact on our property owners. Certainly, as we go through the budget process next year and future years, we'll be working. It's hard if we can't minimize that, but that's the property tax impact associated with the purchase. Obviously, the longer you stretch out the term of the debt, the worse I don't know that we can do it now, but a quarter penny if we go over 15 years, etc. That would not be the first hand, would not be due until sometime in fiscal '26, '27. So we've got plenty of time to budget accordingly for that. Additionally, we would utilize the town's fund balance or idle cash to make the deposit. As I mentioned earlier, the deposit would be somewhere around December the 1st, plus or minus. At that time, we would ask the board to approve what's called a reverse resolution, which essentially allows us entering for financing, agreeing after the fact, reading by its ourselves, so it's pretty common with the future of the town. So there's many times where we'll have to go, it's very complicated, obviously. The last thing I would say before I'll finish, Chief Mathias, I'm going to make a few comments to you. We are getting ready to build a fire station, I do have a fire station too. We are on track to start construction of that, probably April of next year. We envision, they're working on the design right now. We have a meeting on Tuesday, in fact, with the dying team. That station, we think, will probably be somewhere in the 6,500, 7,500 square foot range, plus or minus. Find out for more detail next week. We'll bring that back to you all in January for your review. That station is going to be constructed on a 200 by 200 site, the identical size of the property that I described to you earlier. The board may wish to consider also moving ahead and financing the construction of a fire station three at the same times. I mention that because that's another option that's available to you. I know this has been a high priority for the town for the last several years. If the town proceeds with this, that option would exist, and theoretically, it would result in a lower construction cost for both stations, the state here building two stations as opposed to one. And so if that's something that's desired, and if the board would forward with the land acquisition, I intend to discuss that with the board at the Buggy Pining for Tree shortly after the New Year. Get into that one as well. Regardless of whether you want to move forward with Fire Station Three next spring, or whether you want to wait for another couple of years or even longer, I think the question for you to consider tonight is, is there value in the town acquiring this cop for the long term? We identify it as a fire station, but maybe there are other things that might be worth considering for the town in the future. I think the good thing about the proposal presented is that there is some possibility to do some other things on that issue, on the, could that not necessarily be needed for a fire station? So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We certainly want to be as transparent as possible on this. We put all this information out there on Thursday, one close to understand this and understand the impacts, understand the benefits, hopefully, the town will be in position and move forward at some point. Chief Mathias, want to make a few comments about operations?
Right here. So as far as operational, we have been analyzing and collecting this data, again, just in the, of refresh this, since 2019, roughly. This data that we collected back from 2016, of course. We get graded by the North Carolina State Fire Marchals for our reading response, our fire insurance. Well, that's a secondary goal for us. Our primary goal for this is, again, the responses, the response that everybody has visited to guarantee, guarantee our last rating in 2021. We got a name on pretty good, back in the corner of Australian, which was the strides, the bounds of correcting that, getting that right with the state. In that 2020 point, when we got hit hard on company personnel, so the number of personnel that would respond, we made some good marks over the past couple of years. And the third one would be a deployment analysis. That deployment analysis is just solely based on where our engines, our assets, our stations are at. And so with that being said, so with our representative, Dale Rayner, yesterday, actually, I did talk to him, he did say that that would assist greatly with that deployment analysis, which is a large chunk of 110 points that we get graded on, is actually a bit influenced of that is in there. And so along with that, our company personnel would come up, and then those services of fire, boat rescue, and E and S 20%. So selecting those cordless coast guard roads being a large cordial for us, close by to Emerald Drive, would have only benefited the response. us, close by to Emerald Drive, without only the benefit of responding to our residential neighborhoods and that response time, but also the response times for our commercial business owners on that new town. If we were able to go forward with this station, those response lines, session one, would obviously adjust more so, the actuaries may provide a little bit more, or should say a better response time to those past sixty-four hundred blocks, which are current, line between session one and session two, so session two is coming all the way up on any sixty-three hundred or below access halls. So we would look at that and on what decisions may actually move forward.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Chief Thais?
I've got one. Right now, summertime busy, your response time, let's say, C to point. Sorry, now C to point. It will be this.
That point rules?
Summertime, give or take any day, I'll want you to throw a holiday in there, we're looking at about sixteen, eighteen minutes.
If a fire station is at Pebble Beach, what does that mean in your response time?
If a fire station is at Pebble Beach, you're looking five to six minutes. Just speaking on a previous one from twenty-one, twenty-two, it was April thirtieth, just happened to be, I was on the beach during training, go rescue that day, coffee mountain, I was first one on scene, it took fifteen minutes, so the first engine to get to me had a burning fire. The wall set, you know, house, five percent loss insurance value, but just in the middle of, or should say middle, before the end of that, before summer season started, it was a fifteen-minute response time. The thing that plays into that is giving communities slowdowns, speeds, slowing devices, anytime we have to make that turn, slow that heavy, that wraps down, make those turns safely, make sure we're not damaging our assets, it slows down that response time a little bit more. So I positioned one of those four doors in, or sort of the end of this four doors, down drive and the other four door, it helps out that response time.
Thank you. Chief, what about staffing? Do you have resources now, or you have to pick up additional staff resources?
Apparently, we do have the staffing that was approved for the native unit this past summer and this budget year. And so then we would look towards the additional staffing for engine companies, which would be to own that engine company similarly to what we have at session one and session two currently.
And so that equipment also, you have additional trucks that you would put in there or need?
Some of the need for the additional trucks, that's one that we did look at. We do currently have a, what we call a callback truck, and so if we have a large yield incident, our crew members off duty can respond back, pick that truck out, take resources and personnel on those large yields of incidents. So some of that equipment, we already have in hands, because we just have a very, we don't even saw this part of the equipment, but some of that stuff we already, first in, we have purchased already.
Thank you. Chief, we talked about the fire, let's also mention about health, health response time also, as far as, well, this means we set in on, it was a five-minute time with air, can you explain that a little bit again to the crowd?
Yeah, so when we look at that, switching off the fire aspect more on that, well, that aspect, so we see a lot more need in that. We're looking at that four to six minute response time from us, again, dispatch, again, on scene, we want to have a crew member, we want to have, live in the access there, lack of oxygen for longer than six minutes, yes, somebody can survive, but their quality of life, just here to reach correctly, so by providing that C to go quickly, getting oxygen circulated in that body, in that four to six minute response time.
Thank you, thanks, sir.
Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you Frank for the coverage, thank you chief for your input. I will ask whether or not, I'm going to ask the board to either make a decision or not. Thank you Candace for recording there, I'm getting feedback that they can hear, but it's really, really tough to hear. I know it's an important issue. Before I forget to ask Frank and staff if there is a way to enhance what Candace is recording or what we're putting back on there so that everybody in town knows what's going on, I appreciate that. So I'm getting feedback that they can hear, but they can barely hear, the sound's off just like we all know, but again, for transparency, if there's a way to remaster, enhance, turn the volume up, at least, if for nothing else, a recording, that would be great. So if there are no other questions for Frank or the chief?
I have one more question.
Yes, sir?
Just a quick question, if this moves forward, kind of a question of both of you. I know this summer that we did a trial run with Coast Guard, and I believe it worked really well, having the, letting us use a little spot up there to the response time. And if we get too far with this, do you see any possibility of any restrictions with the town being, we'll put up a temporary spot where maybe a fire truck could sit until our department's spots built, to help go away and take these lands at this time, where it'd be temporary housing or temporary trailer or something that would work? I'm just asking, kind of shooting that out there, because it might be three, four years before we get this building built.
Yeah. I, I can take that. As far as our relationship partnership with this fire station, obviously that's one of my, my job is to keep that bridge and continue to have that relationship with this, our chief, as they change out, I know this time, probably coming up in the next twelve months or so. As far as our EMS unit being there at a twelve-hour time or thirteen, fourteen hour, that's all they can handle right now, because they are full with their crew members, so they're fully housed, and so they don't have any extra beds. As far as the question for fire apparatus, there are some general statute requirements, I would either see if, what it mainly is, keeping a diesel engine above sixty-three feet, happy at base, but I would make that wire or his orders, what the state would be willing to allow, so maybe here on warm ones. But also keep in mind, by putting a fire apparatus down there, that's not housed, not covered, on salt spray, on sand, still washing them, so we will put our assets out there. Possibly just a little bit more wear and tear on it as well, but by all means, we try, whatever we do for the state.
But yeah, I think from the process standpoint, from a condemnation standpoint, there would be nothing that would prevent us from doing that.
Whether or not that's a smart thing to do for the reasons Chief Thais mentioned.
That's a different question, but. I think we have the ability to do that, if we determine it within our best interest to do so.
All right, thank you.
And one more thing, I've got, you know, I've got some recent phone calls. What we're voting on tonight is just to continue the process. It's not like we're voting tonight to take something over, we've still got thirty days, all residents of Pebble Beach are going to be notified, there's another hundred and twenty-day process after that. So what we're voting on tonight is just to continue the process, not to say anything set to stone, anything fall apart, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The resolution that's in your packet for your consideration tonight, it authorizes the town manager and the town attorney to move forward, send out the notices, schedule a special meeting, ultimately file the official actions, and then go through that thirty-day period and a hundred and twenty-day appeal period. So it does give us the authority to move forward and finalize this. However, if there are problems or issues that arise, I will certainly be talking with each of you along the way, and certainly, or can withdraw that approach.
That's awesome. I just wanted the public to know that, this is just part of the transparency.
That's right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Frank, on the, that one third, point three three of a cent, how would property revaluations affect the debt service over a period of time?
That's really a hard question to answer, I would say we just have the revaluation take effect this year. Those values should be in effect for the next four years, at such time that the values are adjusted theoretically four years from now. If the property values continue to appreciate, that tax rate quo is going to go down, right? If somehow the tax values stay the same, or maybe even decreased sums, would affect it the other direction. So it's really hard to answer that, but theoretically, if we continue to see the real estate appreciation being four-year down the road, that impact's not a third of a cent, maybe it's a fifth of a cent, right? But that's how you expect it to be.
So is it, I mean, look at that, because of the way the property values jump around here, would you think it'd be better to do a, a longer term or shorter term?
I would just tell you, ultimately, I try to keep the term of any new debt issue as short as possible. Historically, we've tried to keep up in the ten-year range or less, so that would be my recommendation to you. Typically, the rate's going to be lower the shorter the term, that's not necessarily been the case recently, the rates, short-term and long-term are not that different going forward, but my recommendation to you would be to keep it at ten years. If you do want to lessen that burden going forward, you certainly should look at fifteen, even if you want to go to twenty, I think that's an option.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, there's a suggested motion, you don't have to, you can, you can. Let the board take it from here.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing friendly condemnation of nine two zero one coast fire break.
Commissioner Taylor with the motion, all in favor?
Uh.
No opposed, motion carried, thank you all.
Thank you, I'm an air hockey commissioner, your next meeting is November eighteenth, as we talked about before, because of the Veterans Day holiday. I'll certainly plan to provide an update to you at that meeting, let you know how the process is going, and get where any follow-up issues at that time.
Frank, can we also do something besides social media to make our residents aware of that as well? Possibly, I know it's going to have to be advertised legally in the local publications as process, but some disclosure is what our intent is, what our next move is, because I think it's a fair question, the fact that we are voting on something before people have had an opportunity to see more. I also appreciate the fact that we had to be discreet on some of this in order to get all the details, and as anyone can see from this packet of information, we just received this appraisal last week. And it's, I don't want to hide anything from the public, but there are certain aspects of property acquisition, real property acquisition, that I'm sure you all understand, that we can't disclose until we know all the answers.
We'll certainly do our very best to call the sides, if I'll put something at the next issue, if they have a newsletter, we'll put it out that they form outside.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Also, can my head's utilization or app, we push that out possibly?
That'd be great. Just anything we can do to make sure that people who don't use social media can also have access to this.
Thank you all. All right, moving on to item number fifteen, we have a couple of appointments to our Board of Adjustment. Big page here, excuse me, make sure I get it right, so I'm going to read it all out loud. Board of Commissioners is scheduled to complete appointments to the Board of Adjustments at this meeting. The Board should assign Board of Adjustment members Andrew Frick and Tom Kench to the one-year regular member term and the one-year alternate term. Both of these terms will expire in June of two thousand twenty-six. I'm gonna, there's another final alternate term, and I'm going to stop there. Mr. Frick and Mr. Kench, I believe, were tied during the last appointment process, if I'm not sorely mistaken, so I'm going to ask the Board to do a roll call vote for the one-year regular Board of Adjustment member term, and we'll do a roll call for either Andrew Frick or Tom Kench, and then I'll move on to the alternate, which should be a number once we get to the first one. All right, and I'll start with Commissioner Taylor, we're going to do a roll call for the one-year regular Board of Adjustment member spot. One name or the other?
Sorry, I'm trying to read through.
You're good.
Andrew Frick to the one-year regular term, is what we're saying here.
It's either Andrew Frick or Tom Kench to the one-year regular term. They were tied during the last appointment process.
I'm good. We'll call Patrick Frick.
Thank you. Ms. Wooden?
Andrew Frick.
Brownlow?
Frick.
Ms. Sawyer?
Frick.
Samson?
Frick.
All right, that's five for Mr. Frick. Welcome to the Board of Adjustments. One-year member term expires due to two thousand twenty-six. Need a roll call vote to appoint the remaining member to the one-year alternate term. Roll call vote, I'll start again with Mr. Taylor.
All, this is all time?
This is alternate.
Yeah, Tim Kench. Ben Gans.
Tim Kench, I'm assuming?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, alternate. Kench.
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 Welcome, Mr. Kench, thank you. All right, the Board shall now, we've got that one covered, and I thank you, Mr. Kench and Mr. Frick, for your willingness to serve, we appreciate that. Now, the Board shall appoint either Mark Wicker or Catherine Rinn to the final one-year alternate member term that will also expire in June two thousand twenty-six. So we'll start with another roll call vote, there's one, one-year alternate member spot available, roll call vote for either Mark Wicker or Catherine Rinn. Sorry, again, now with Mr. Taylor.
Mark Wick.
All right. One, Mr. Wick.
Mr. Wicker.
Mr. Wicker.
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 All right, that is five for Mark Wicker, so welcome to the Board of Adjustments, alternate team, thank you all. All right, I'm sixteen, I'm the chairman of the, or Commissioner on the chair.
Thank you.
Just a slide, final comment, sir?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out today, make sure you get out there and vote, and do better than my town looking burn, which is already done, because this year they did not show out, so make sure you show up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rush, your final comment, sir?
Yeah, just a few things. Again, the next board meeting is on Tuesday, November the eighteenth, that's one week later than normal because of the Veterans Day holiday, obviously, we should have also the twenty twenty-five election at that time. Couple of things, we are finalizing the June thirtieth twenty twenty-five audit report. If we don't see any significant issues, we hope that we'll present that to you at that November eighteenth meeting, possibly the December meeting. Preliminarily, we ended the year with a positive surplus of about two hundred and forty thousand, so things look pretty good in that regard. I wanted to just make you aware of two things, one is, Boat Banks Water Corporation is seeking an easement on the east side of the Boat Ramp property, kind of near the single vehicle parking lot, it's the easternmost twenty-foot strip, they're working to secure a separate easement from Chapel by the Sea so that they can run the discharge plant for a new reverse Moses plant through that area, we discharge out the bog sound, technically that land is owned by the Emerald Isle Parks and Recreation Association Incorporated, that's a nonprofit corporation the town created, that's probably about fifteen years ago, just the whole title's that land. So we'll get that group together, there's a free member or the director, get that together and consider that easement. From the town's perspective, I don't see any issues or concerns at all, no operational impacts on both creative and energy, that's utilized, and wood, you know, so just wanted to make you aware of that. I'm also talking with folks associated with the North Carolina Cultural Federation, as well as UNC Eastern Marine Science, we're working on installing a couple living shoreline demonstration projects, one at the Park Drive, Soundside Access, in one ten street area, you know, costs about seven thousand dollars total for both locations, they have about seven thousand dollars in matching funds coming from the cultural federation, so we're working to make that happen hopefully here sometime in this winter. Lots of other things included in the written material, happy to answer any questions you have about those items, or really anything else that's on your mind with the town, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, from the Board, Mr. Samson, just talk to him.
Yes, just thank you all for coming out and for the information, and again, I apologize for the lack of transparency on your knowledge, and as I've always told many of you, I always think I can do better, and in this case, I think we can do better, therefore, we will do better. When you know, when you know better, you do better. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Sawyer? Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, and thank the staff, I apologize to Chief Thais for fapping your guys up with Apple Chiefs gift the other day, they seem like they're really wearing it. Everybody get out and vote, very, 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 very important.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Commissioner Rowland?
Mayor, I'd like to thank the community for their outpouring, showed love, support, showing for my family, you know, my toy, a public announcement that she is, to let everyone, that she is, is doing really good for considering. for considering everything she's been through. And, and please keep the prayers coming, I can attest that they do work. And I'd like to thank staff, and I tell you, we are truly blessed in this community to have a town manager like Frank Rush. He's an extraordinary manager, as well as an extraordinary person. He does a great job. Thank you for this information, too, Frank. And I'd really like to thank staff for these great notebooks. I'm a paper guy, I got my hat and everything too, but just can't be taking notes on these things. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir.
And then as far as transparency goes, when I was first elected, I was running on, you know, trying to engage the public more, having more input from the public. And we had a, we tried doing like a meetings at various places, and the turnout's just weren't there, you know, people wouldn't show up. We'd be there, ready to talk to people. Maybe I could get a couple of people, if they want to talk about the weather or something, not really much about the issues. And then we did a newsletter, the coffee press, we tried that. I don't know if that's still active or not, but that's kind of was keeping people current on what's happening. Nonetheless, I have a town phone and I have an email address, and I'd certainly welcome anyone to call me. And you'll talk to anybody that I've dealt with, you'll find out that I'm very responsive. I'll come to your house, or I'll meet you at a neutral location, and be, wouldn't have to be talking with you about anything I'm aware of that I can legally talk to you about. So I have nothing to hide, or, you know, I'm fully transparent, and will be glad to disclose any information I can share with you. I'll share my notes with you. It's all public information, it's all right here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Woodin?
Yeah, first, thanks, folks, for coming out tonight. And it's too bad if it's not getting through. And thank you, Candace, for the recording job. AB Club, go AB Club. Yeah, I'll pull on the transparency thread, and I've heard that a lot in the candidate forums that we've had over the last couple of weeks. And I would love to get with you, Peter, and maybe Michelle, and talk more about the specifics, because you guys are very engaged, and I think I can learn more about where you're coming from in that observation. I suspect there's a communication problem, because there are some things, particularly around closed meetings, that we can't disclose, but there are things that we absolutely do publish. And I think there might be a gap in the communication that leads to that perception of lack of transparency. I can tell you from my perspective, nobody up here is trying to hide the ball or trying to not be transparent. But as Alicia said, I think we'll probably lean forward and figure out ways to more effectively communicate the details that we can so that folks have a better feeling for what's actually going on and how the consequential decisions that are coming before us. I'm personally committed to see, trying to improve there wherever we can, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
I think I like going last better. I chose to vote for one, so it's very high. I agree with pretty much what everybody just said. I said that like my speech a little bit simpler. Thanks for the HOA for coming forward for us, and I really appreciate it. It's been a five year process. I've served on that board now for five years. And what we voted on tonight to continue the process is very important for everybody in Inwood Isle and for our tourists and stuff too. It's, it's very odd for me, the last five years, to see the, like the five vision thing that brought to attention again, or the fires that we saw and burned. 15 minutes for a fire truck to show up caused traffic so bad, we've all dealt with it. Every summer we deal with it, we know not to go to food line at certain times of the week. We know not, things to do and not to do. And if we can make a change to it, it's going to benefit all of us, while we're an owner and it's important. And so it's an important thing to have a fire station in the areas that we need to have it. So thank you to all your firemen out there and your policemen out there. We need to support the staff the best we can, and this is one thing, by supporting them, it's going to support all of us. And hopefully, a lot of us will get a few more hours and days to our lives, because we're going to have that fire station going to be close to you and handle a little bit less of it. So thank you for that. And one last thing is, we had more than successful Inwood Isle fishing tournament a couple of weeks ago. It was, we had a total of 105 of them show up for our fishing tournament and sign up for it. It was amazing turnout. Happy to report, there's going to be scholarships again next year. The committee will leave and award scholarships out for the springtime. There'll be, I'm sure there's going to be money left over to donate some more stuff back to the town. All the money that we raised, I'll pretty much give it all back out, just enough to kick it back off again for the next year. So happy to report we'll have another tournament next year. Thank you for people that volunteered, thank you for fishing the tournament if you did it, thank you for your support if you supported the tournament anyway. Thank you for town staff, Frank, for everybody that volunteered for it, all the commissioners up here. As most of you know, I will be a commissioner in a couple of more months, but I will stick around with the fishing tournament, try to be a part of that. So looking forward to helping out with that in coming years and anything I do for the town staff. So, and thank you, Frank, for getting this deal worked out for us, for the, our, we've been working on for a long time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'll keep it short. Thank you to all that serve our town. Thank you to everyone that comes out and voices your opinion, your cares, concerns. Genuinely appreciate it. Above and beyond all, thank you for our first responders, police, fire, EMS, our town staff, Public Works, Parks and Rec. They make it, I've said it once, I'll say it again every time I open my mouth, they make it the place that we can blissfully, ignorantly, just live our happy little lives. And if we need something, we call them, and they're always there. So big, big shout gratitude to them, and a big call to listen to them when they say they need this or it could be better here, there, and anywhere else. We should listen to them first and foremost, because they're the ones that allow us to live the life that we do from a transparency standpoint. Transparency is very, very, very important. Unless you have sat in one of these seats, been to school, lived experience, one, two, three, four, 20 years of either making decisions or being a sounding board and a kind of conduit to those that do make the decisions, it's a heavy lift, it's a big lift. And I think it's one, unless you really sit down and talk with someone or really do it, it takes that, in my opinion, to gain a fuller understanding of what you can talk about, what you can't talk about. There's legal reasons you can't talk about this, there's HR reasons you can't talk about that. There are things that you feel like you should have known about earlier, and I feel the same way. But until there is enough information to share with you, it creates a bigger problem, excuse me, to share half truths or misinformation. So I ask you all to understand that I try and I believe everybody else that sits in one of these seats or will sit in one of these seats, does try to be transparent. I'm certainly not here to hide anything from anyone, but I do have a small, but much better understanding than I did four years ago, that there are some things that you just can't talk about for legal or other reasons. You want to, but in respect to the process, in respect to the procedure, and in respect to everybody that's involved, and that's everybody in the town, I will let you know when I'm able to let you know with respect to the process and with respect to all of the people involved. Transparency is extremely important. And at the same time, whoever you vote for to hold any of these seats, they are entrusted to know, learn, and respect that process. And happy to share any of that information. I think that will be a really, really key fundamental thing is for all of us to make an attempt to better understand the process. It's a lot, it's a big lift, and I appreciate anybody that's ever served this town. I appreciate anybody that ever will serve this town. And I appreciate you all for being as engaged as you are, and I encourage you to continue to be that engaged. Better together, that's all I have to say. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Send it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You guys have a great night, you stay pin-hump.